We are going to start with our 6.9 item. 1:30 PM, public hearing continued from... Wait, is that the right one? Yes, okay. Continued from September 12th, 2023. Consideration of the final recommended budget for fiscal year 2023-2024 for the County of Lake and special districts governed by the Board of Supervisors. And I will pass this off to Admin and Assistant CAO Stephen Carter.
Thank you, Board. And actually, I'm not going to say much before I pass it along and introduce you to Casey Moreno, who is our new Deputy County Administrative Officer over finance and budget. And I'll turn it over to her.
It's just on. Sorry. Okay, let me share my screen. We are pleased to present for your Board's consideration the fiscal year 2023-24 Final Recommended Budget. This mandarandum is intended to serve as an update to our July 9, 2023 mandarandum introducing the fiscal year 2023-24 Recommended Budget. For your reference, the mandarandum is also attached to your agenda packet as much of it is still applicable. So now, I will start with a summary of the revenues, starting with the interest. So on August 15th, your Board requested a review of the interest revenues. As you can see, the 2022-23 overall interest was just over 5.9 million. The county interest was almost 4 million, 3.886. The non-county interest was just over 2 million. That is a significant jump from 2021-22, which was the overall interest was just under a million. For reference, we went back 11 years to see what the interest has been. And as you can see, in 2019, there was a significant jump, and that was due to the investments that came due and were not reinvested, which is why you see that huge spike there. Then it drops down due to those investments not being reinvested. And then currently, the last fiscal year at 2022-23, it was significantly higher. We do anticipate that the revenues will even out and become more consistent in the future. Next, we'll go into the fund balance available or carryover. So the estimated FBA decreased by just over 11 million from the prior year, 2022-23, which still leaves 31 million in FBA. Just over 17 million of that was already approved allocations at recommended budget. Then we have a few reserves that we are requesting funds be added to, which I will go into further detail on another slide. And then with the final recommended budget, we have 1.4 million new allocations that are being requested.
Do you mind if I ask a question? General fund only is the fund carry balance that you're giving us?
Correct. And the new allocations are mostly capital assets and a few ARPA. So going into ARPA, so the committee met on August 16th and would like to make the following changes. So from the standard allowance, the mobile library vehicle, we are requesting it be decreased from 200,000 to 150,000. The countywide credit card acceptance decreased altogether, so taking out the 50,000. The Granicus Clerk docs was originally budgeted at 64,500. That has been completed, so we are reducing that to 54,100. The content management system decreased from 150,000 to 75,000. And the CDD general plan update, increasing that from 1 million to 1.6 million. Of the non-standard allowance, we are requesting that a new allocation is added for a medical director for fire departments, which will be paid through via... Sorry. Paid through public health of $6,800. That's a three-year contract. The testing and vaccination sites, we are requesting that be zeroed out altogether. EMS contract decreasing from 200,000 to 150,000. And the Kelseyville Senior Center increasing by 100,000.
And I did want to clarify one thing. The difference between standard allowance and the non-standard allowance, for those who don't know, the standard allowance is the 10 million that each county is allowed to utilize for governmental services for basically revenue loss. The non-standard allowance is the amount that has to be utilized under the actual claiming and rules specific to the ARPA funds, which totals just over 2.5 million.
Moving into the sales tax, so the Bradley Burn sales tax increased by $129,784, or 3%. Prop 172 sales tax decreased by $296,700, or 6%. Again, we went back 11 years, and this graph does include the current year, what we are estimating. We are expecting the tax revenue will decrease, so more than likely, mid-year, we will come back to ask for the allocation to be decreased.
Yeah, I'm going to expand a little on that one.
Okay.
So we have noticed, and per the projections, that sales tax is projected to decrease this year. We did budget for it to decrease by a few hundred thousand dollars, but depending on what actually comes in before mid-year, we'll adjust accordingly, which may or may not be more than we originally budgeted for.
Moving into taxes. So current secure property tax was an increase of 1.1 million, or 7% increase. Transit occupancy tax decreased by 57,000, or 5%. Cannabis tax decreased by 4.5 million, or 71% decrease. We are anticipating current secure property tax to go up this year again. Transit occupancy tax, we are expecting to come back up to closer to a million. And cannabis, we are anticipating to continue to decline, just not that significant as it was the past year. So with cannabis, the balance after the allocations that are currently in the recommended budget is 30% for planning, code enforcement, water resources, environmental health is The 30% for law enforcement leaves the balance of $395,970. The 30% for economic development, housing, risk reduction is 1.208,891. And the 10% for youth programs is $294,383. Also available is the workforce retention and development of $164. And the Board of Supervisors discretionary fund of $146,528.
And the part in there that is not stated because it's not part of the 30-30-10 split is the stabilization fund, which remains at just over 6.9 million, which is for payroll if, under the new MOUs, that we were not able to have the general fund or support for non-general fund departments. We currently do support child support and CDD through this funding. And this also is for ongoing expenses within the allocations, like the libraries, where during the initial CAN grant, we... The Board approved positions. They are still funded out of their allocation here. And if revenues went to zero, that's what would pick up the slack and pay for those positions, as well as two sheriff deputies, the last two. That was the agreement, 200,000 for the last two. If they hired the last two, it would come out of the law enforcement first, and if there's nothing there, it would then come out of the stabilization.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I know at... Excuse me. At first glance, it appears to be growing, but you're saying it's kind of a combination of things that have been brought together. I guess first thoughts are that our CAN grants are from two years ago, three years ago. Just kind of curious what was approved and what's not moving. Is it not moving in the sense that that money should be reallocated to be available? Or is it still moving where the allocation is still has a purpose? I would love to discuss the continued need of 6.5 million dollars, or whatever that approximate amount is, in that specific budget item. As the way that our budget is done on a department-by-department basis, we're not utilizing those funds other than what you just stated for CDD and child welfare. And so I just like to get a better grasp on what that amount is. We put it there for a specific reason. It hasn't been necessarily utilized in the way that we had anticipated it might be needed. And I just see it as another kind of niche reserve on top of reserves of things that could be utilized for something else. I won't go into details now, but I'd love to go into further discussion at one point or another. And today's... I don't know if that's the day. I don't feel it's the day, but I'd love to bring it back, if there's consensus to do so. That's a large amount of money.
We can bring that back if it is the Board's wish. The stabilization funding is to cover basically any ongoing expenses that are already built into the other cannabis funding. And when your Board approved the pay increases, the MOUs, it was meant to be a one-year backstop for if the general fund and other departments didn't have the funding. That can definitely be looked at and possibly adjust the number down or up, depending on how the Board looks at it.
And some of the funding for a risk reduction will likely be used for tree removal, too.
That would likely come out of the 6.9, yes. For the stabilization, that's how that would be funded if that comes today.
When that comes.
Yeah, when.
When that comes.
And I will say that, you know, when Casey was bringing up that there's 467,000 left of the planning, code enforcement, water resources, that's with just over a million dollars in allocations for fiscal year 23-24. I was going to say 13-14. So there are quite a bit of allocations, and this does... That also fluctuates quite a bit, depending on what departments get done that year, and then what they're requesting out of that pot the next year. I know you know that, but...
So to his point, is now the appropriate time to do that? Or do we bring it back? Because I have cannabis tax allocations that kind of got placed under the former supervisor. Then we came up with a direction for a work program. Now it looks like they got funding from another source. So I'm definitely confused about the available discretionary funds on top of whatever concerns are raised about reserves. So maybe today is not the day to get that exact roadmap. But if we're actually locking in that shift from the previous allocation to some other allocation, waiting on a work program I'm not going to get, I just want to know when we're going to look at that.
The discretionary is not locked in at this point, other than the overall amount. I think we should talk more offline about that 165,000 on that specific discretionary and the other funding sources. I do think if we want to dig deep into the stabilization and everything else that goes into the allocations, we probably should have an item of its own, because we would prepare very differently for it and have far more details for you.
And that would be my request, is give us more details. My idea is not to say, "Let's cancel it," but let's take a look at it. It's a large sum of money. Can it be better utilized, whether it's for what Chair Pyska was requesting that we look at or other things? But right now, it was meant for a one-year backstop. We've passed that year, and I think we need to make sure that we can continue moving forward within our means, because this is one-time money, not continuous money. And if we can figure out how to work within our means, then that money is sitting there that could be utilized to serve our public in better ways.
At a later date, correct?
Yes.
We could... It's a little far off, but we do have a lot of really full agendas, so we could have that deeper dive discussion at mid-year budget.
If early, great.
But yeah, but I'm good with mid-year, too, if that's what happens.
We will be ready when you need us to be.
Okay.
And if I may add, for the discretionary funds, I would definitely suggest working with staff, because I don't want to make decisions on your discretionary funds, just like I don't want you to make decisions on my discretionary funds. So I would say work with them and figure out where you stand and what you can still do with it.
So there's a few changes since Admin finalized the budget, and so we would like to request that those are added to the approval today. To Budget Unit 8799, air quality, like to increase 1513 by $410, decrease 25 by $410, decrease 8... I'm sorry, 38 by 2,364. The reason that there's more decreases than increases is they didn't want to use FBA for their increases in insurance. We also wanted to highlight Budget 1011, which is the Board of Supervisors. So we budgeted for a PR firm for the BOS, $50,000, and we are issuing an RFP for a lobbyist. We'll try to bring the Board's chambers remodel forward at mid-year. And then Maria would like to come up.
Thank you. Maria Turner, Community Development Director. I have a request that was inadvertently omitted from the final budget, so I'm very thankful for this opportunity to bring it to you directly. I would like to request the funding of the principal planner position. In the year, just over a year, that I have been acting as Director, about 80% of my time is still used directly overseeing the planning division. This can be anything from handling more complex counter questions, answering a number of questions and giving direction to staff, to planning staff, as well as maintaining... I am the final editor of the staff reports for the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. We have done a number of internal improvements that have really benefited and helped our relationship and our credibility, but it still takes a lot of my time. So we did adjust our revenues to reflect increased revenues that would help to support this position. We have a number of large projects coming. The general plan and local area plan updates. Mahaw Gwinock Valley is returning. We are... We have a modification to an existing geothermal permit, and we don't anticipate that being the last. So we have plenty to keep a new person here funded and very busy. So I would just request funding for a principal planner position in this budget year. Thank you.
So how long do you anticipate the position needing to rely on general funds for its self-sustaining?
A number of our upper-level management positions depend on different budgets. And as you know, planning typically is very reliant on the general fund. We do have... We requested a removal of the grant writer position that I had formally thought was great, but since our deputy administrator has been present, her experience and understanding of grant writing and grant management has led us to believe that a staff services analyst would be more appropriate for that. But we do anticipate a two-to-three-year growth in our grants management program or our grants program, with the overall goal to achieve sustainability in the planning division. So maybe that long?
Okay.
But one other thing I wanted to point out is, with this additional staff capacity, especially an experienced level, it will enable us to also do more monitoring of our existing permits and ensure compliance and probably collect some citations and fines where that is not, you know, where we aren't having the best, easiest time with that.
Supervisor Swatier.
I was going to bring that up. It was alluded to earlier today in the previous agenda item, but I think that the idea that the contract is being negotiated, I'm thinking it's going to come back to the Board of Supervisors before anything gets approved. But I would say that that's part of the solution, because right now, we're just doing the work of people who are not choosing to comply with our code. That's going to add a whole lot of revenues. I've seen it in other jurisdictions, and the number is actually a lot larger than we might even believe it could be. So I think that that will help out, and that will be part of the solution as well. But providing you with the tools, especially with the following agenda items that are coming up that relate to your department, that's a heavy lift, and we want to make sure that everything else that your department's dealing with is going to be smooth and efficient for everyone else that's trying to get permits, start new businesses, development, whatever it is. So I'm in support, but I think we need to keep an eye on it, just to make sure that we're not digging too deep into the general fund.
Thank you.
I can't let you go yet.
I'm not going anywhere.
I need actual numbers and accounts to actually change it at final budget.
No problem. At this moment, I will get that for you momentarily.
Print what you had, and then I'll state it.
Yes.
First of all, was that approved?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, and I'll state that later.
Next, we'll go into the reserve funds. So the general reserves, we are asking for another 500,000 to be added, so that will leave the balance at 16 million. The Parks Reserve is a brand-new reserve, and we are asking that 3 million be added to it. That will be for the JPA and/or could be used for county parks. Next is the Technology Reserve. So currently, there is 2 million, a little over 2 million in there, so we're asking that another 4 million be added there. The General Designated Reserve is a new reserve, which we are planning on housing the LATCF funds in their entirety, as none has been spent yet. And that reserve account is planned... We are planning on using that for other funding sources in the future that are discretionary. But we did commit 1% of that. We did, yeah. You haven't spent it? It just hasn't been spent yet. Yeah.
The other types of funding that would go in there would be if we ever have ARPA or LATCF. Basically, funding sources that have restrictive reporting requirements that shouldn't be just lumped into the massive general fund FBA or...
Okay, that's our strings attached.
Basically, yes.
Okay. And the last of the new fund, that is a trust fund for housing. So we are requesting 1 million of ARPA be put in there, and then we're matching it with a million of general fund. Supervisor Swatier.
Just real quick, is this the last of the conversation regarding reserves at this moment in time?
So next up, I would like to bring Elise Jones from Behavioral Health, but if you have questions not behavioral health-related?
Okay, so I do have some questions about some of the specifics that are up there. Parks Reserve, we've been talking a lot about the JPA and the potential for a countywide effort for Parks and Rec. Are the 3 millions committed to that specifically, or just kind of a nebulous Parks?
Well, see, that's what she was saying, where it can be used for JPA or LARS and Parks. That's for your Board to decide when and how it is used when it comes out. Our intention with the 3 million was for the JPA. This Fund 152 would have to come through the Administration Office before coming to your Board, so I'm hopeful that the Board would know what their intent of this fund would be.
I would... I'll just voice my opinion. I think the intent should be for the JPA, so that we show commitment to the countywide effort.
I think the... I agree with the intent that it's with the JPA. We don't have... I don't think we have any plans to spend it any other way. I think the... This year, we should have... We should be working with all the parties of the JPA to commit funding and have their set-asides made. So this is a good faith effort for us to start that, and we can look to the other partners to see how they follow suit.
Supervisor Green.
I'm opening the discussion, however, I think we are going to have some public input on this particular reserve and maybe some other reserves along the way. I hear some people wanting to lock it in for JPA. I think county has substantial needs as well, so I kind of like the nebulous nature of it right now, because we are going to have to bounce some numbers around in the future and decide what an appropriate use is. So I kind of like the idea of an open-ended reserve, especially if there's going to be other requests to bump up the JPA funding. Maybe it doesn't have to be with the reserve route. So I hear what you're saying, but I don't want to lock this reserve in.
Yeah, I like the definition that it would be both combined with JPA and Parks, not being specific on one. Obviously, I know I'm part of a JPA. I would love to have a $3 million infusion of funds from the Board for another JPA. But I think it's very important on the project we're talking about with the countywide JPA, so some type of commitment needs to be there. So I'm going to agree with that, just not specific to it.
Right.
I would rather it be specific to Parks. I'm not in favor of the JPA having anything, so...
All right. And that's why it is called just the Parks Reserve, because it can be however the Board decides to release the funds from the reserve. So it would be an item at that time requesting specific usage. But that's why it's purposely not specific to either way, but it could theoretically be either, depending on your Board's opinion at the time.
And I understand we need to contribute. It's just I feel it can be spent other ways, but we're going to move in that direction.
So just to finish off, until we get a specific ask from the JPA, it's hard to know exactly what the intent should be, but I just think even if it's kind of nebulous, we've obviously voiced some opinions of, yes, we'd like to commit something, and maybe it's not the 3 million, but at least it allows us to approach the table with a good faith effort that we are wanting to contribute, rather than just be at the table. So I think it puts us in a better position, at least moving forward, compared to where we were before, since that reserve did not exist. The General Designated Reserve, just a real quick question, capital asset-wise, any time during the year to look at capital asset changes? And I don't even know if it fits within capital assets. I'm trying to figure out for the potential LG Sonic, do we need to look at adding a capital asset at mid-year or now? Or is it any time during the year that that's capable to do so?
With a four-fifths vote, because it's in... It would be in reserve at this time. It would be a resolution brought forward to cancel those reserves and add an appropriation of this capital asset or in this account. So it is not horribly difficult, it's just much easier at one of the three budget times.
Okay.
Are you asking for that funding for that project now?
That was originally on the request, was to look at either ARPA or LATCF or other things. And so since that's LATCF funds, it's still a possibility. Again, it's not set in stone, just a conversation to make sure that it's available if it comes up and is brought to the Board.
Are you looking at other funding opportunities or grants? Because I think we could use this to offset with some matching funds. That's a big ask.
I know we've looked at grants, especially in helping our water districts in the sense of drought resiliency, and that was denied. So of course, we'll still be looking for free money. Free money is always a great thing, but just the fact that we have it and it's needed, at least it's a potential conversation.
Okay. Yeah, keep looking, too. Okay. All right. So I would like to bring up Elise Jones. Oh, sorry.
I did want to bring up one more thing, which we... If the public remembered from recommended budget, we did put the first tranche or the first half of LATCF into reserve. It was put into the Technology Reserve. So with this, instead of doing the mechanics of pulling it out of technology and then putting it into the General Designated Reserve... I can speak. I just wanted to be very clear that the 1.5 million that was in the Technology Reserve from LATCF has now moved to the General Designated Reserve, just to be ultra-clear.
Okay, thank you.
Elise?
Come on up.
Oh, you can have my side.
No, it's okay. I'll sit next to you. Thank you, Casey.
Hello. Oh, it is really loud and live. That's good. Elise Jones, Director of Behavioral Health. Thank you so much, Casey, for that introduction. And I'd like to make another introduction to Christine Andress, who is our Deputy Director of Administration, newly promoted. She was previously our fiscal manager, so she has become an ex- newly promoted. She was previously our Fiscal Manager, so she has become an expert in behavioral health finance. But for this question, Chrissy, about our reserves.
So as before, we came to you guys and asked for a resolution to open up our reserve account to cover our end-of-the-year fiscal invoices, which we didn't end up needing nearly as much as the funding as we expected. So going back into reserves, we still have about $2.5 million going back into the reserves. There was about 3.5 in there prior, and so we just wanted to, yeah, that's what I have here. So in MHSA funding, we have 1.1 going back in, and we only ended up using a total of, actually, I just had it on here, $951,000 out of that funding to cover the end of the year. So we still have funding in reserves. The only funding we used was our MHSA programs. We used 181,000 out of that. And then our audit settlements is where we used 700, I believe it was like 750-something out of that. 769,000 out of that. Everything else was put back into the same account as it was prior. Yeah, we're hoping. So we're hoping to put all that funding back as soon as the state releases it to us, back into the reserves. Go ahead.
Just a real quick question. That means that the payments are smoothing out as far as the new process with the new software that you guys are using or the new payment method that you're using?
Yes, we are seeing funding coming back in from our new billing system.
Yes, and just so you know, it's, the director signs all of the billing. I didn't know that. Well, I kind of did. Anyways.
Now you do.
Now I for sure do. But it's nice, because I have seen, it got a little slim there for a minute as we had, but I've seen it pick back up, so that's been really encouraging.
Quick question about AODS, because I know that's mostly an audit settlement reserve as well. That's what it says.
Yeah, I don't know who named those reserve accounts. I don't know who named those reserve accounts. I think the one in the 4-1-4 budget actually says Housing.
Yeah, there's different ones. There's South Shore Remodel, there's Audit Settlement, Workforce Training, Housing, MHSA Programs, and things like that.
I don't know what this one is.
That was added this year.
Oh, okay.
So my question, if you don't mind. It appeared when we borrowed money from the reserves that Audit Settlements was not a state-mandated reserve. It was a local decision to create that reserve. Seeing that there's 1.5 million in AODS, I'd like to understand, if possible, not now, but giving us documentation as to how did we come to 1.4 million being saved in Audit Settlements? Where did that amount come from specifically? How did we choose that amount? Just because there's such a need for those services, just wondering if there's anything that can be released so that we can provide more services? Or if there's a real good reason as to why we fear that an audit settlement might end up costing us the 1.4?
So I want to first provide a little bit of, and I don't want to take the, because we could take a long time talking about behavioral health finance. It's pretty complex. But I think just really simply, those services that we're talking about are medical reimbursable. Of course, what becomes medical reimbursable will expand under ODS, and we're looking forward to that. But right now, the contract, as we talked about before, with the state that allows us to pay for those, it's really a placeholder. So there isn't a limit necessarily on how much services you can provide as long as those services are justifiable and they're not fraudulent, right? So that's just my, there's no cap on services whatsoever. Some of the services that are not DMC reimbursable, we do use like our substance abuse block grant funds and other things, but Chrissy may want to follow up on the specifics of your question. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
So the Audit Settlement counts are after cost reports are settled with the state. They give us back funding. So for instance, we'll pay out stuff that we don't get reimbursed from by the state, and the state's catching up. So these are audit settlements of funding that comes back to us after we've closed out the fiscal year. So I know we saw a huge increase from 2016-17 on a cost report settlement from those years on, I want to say their perinatal funding and services that we had built up to the state that they never had paid us back. And they finally, once they did their cost report settlement, they paid us those services back.
In case that settlement happens and it's not in our favor, this is what pays.
Yeah, so like Stephen was saying, if we had a cost report settlement that we had to pay... So he's talking about cost report settlements. So these are funding, this is a bucket of money that we sit on, is if we have a cost report settlement that we have to pay on services, then this is the bucket of money we'll take it out of as well.
And so that would come from like an audit, where the Department of Healthcare Services comes in, and they audit our everything, just like we do to our subcontractors. You know, time to time, you don't check all the dot the Ts and cross the whatever, you know? So we do have to pay up sometimes, although it's pretty minimal.
And our contractors have to do the same thing. If the state comes out and audits them, and they find a service that should not have been paid for, our contractors will pay us back for that service as well.
Are you still wanting him to come back with an explanation of what makes up the 1.4? Or was that sufficient?
I'm still looking for that documentation, just because I don't know where that number comes from. Was there a mathematical formula? Like, what was the initial process to create that? And is it needed to be updated, changed, or?
Well, I think it's just a carryover of every year of all the cost report settlements or the settlements that come in throughout the year. We carry it over into that reserve at the end of the year when we have a fund balance carryover. When there's funding left over from it, we put it into that slot of funding.
With that in mind, they're actually increasing it by 519,000 this year. So under what has happened, it was actually a good audit year for us, per se. So it is variable.
Okay, any further questions? Thank you.
So next, we'll go into capital assets. There's a few additions to the final recommended budget, which are on the screen there. All I included was the brand-new additions. There was also some capital assets that either increased or decreased, which are in final recommended budget.
Supervisor Spatier.
Just a quick question to finish up with the reserves. I did have one final question. And that is that we have five pages, it would appear, of reserves, or close to, of reserves. And some of those are quite large. Some of those are very small and specific. Some are restricted, some are general. I just don't, there's no possible way for me, within the five days in preparing, and even the changes that are occurring, for me to know exactly what those reserves, what the specific purpose is. And from a specific public perspective, what I see is 132, almost 133 million dollars in reserves, which is a large amount. Some of it is absolutely necessary. Some of it is enterprise-restricted. Some of it is very specifically restricted by the state. I would love to get a report to allow us to know what are the reasons for the reserves in a future report, whether that be mid-year or sometime between now and mid-year. But that is a large number that is not easily explainable to the public. And even some of these numbers, I'm making a lot of assumptions as to what I'm seeing and what I'm looking at. And so I just think with that large of a number, it would be nice to get a little bit of a breakdown to understand, do we still need some of these reserves? What is the purpose of those reserves? And what is the anticipated use of those reserves?
That would be very difficult to come up with, because this is going to be 90, you know, 80% of these are department-specific, so I would want the department to talk about their reserves. As admin goes, we would only be about five or six of these. So we can come up with some kind of report. It would take time to talk to each and every department who has a reserve and get their description of what those are. And if we presented, I don't like pushing things off, but the easiest time to do that would be either at like the workshop or during June, when every single department head is explaining their budget. Absolutely explain what these reserves are and why. We can try to come up with some kind of report. I have no idea what it would look like until I talk to the departments.
But in the department memos, it talks about their reserves typically. Do you want like a separate box in the memo directly for reserves?
I just think, again, from a public perspective, 132 million is a large amount of money. From my perspective, that's a large amount of money. Not saying there's no purpose in having it, but I can think of approximately 40 million dollars of somewhat discretionary, but yet useful to have in reserves. Again, having a conversation about what our expectation and anticipation of the use of those reserves are is a healthy conversation to have. And I'll just leave it at that. I just think that we don't give the public the information as far as in our conversations. Reading through this 600-page budget is not what I should be asking the public to go through to figure out what's going on with 132 million dollars worth of reserves. And so if it's possible, at one point, not giving you a specific date, but again, looking at the board for approval of this, to help provide a little bit more understanding of what this is, taxpayers are providing this. And I don't know that anybody would be able to answer these questions if I started asking the public what's going on with these funds. And I can't specifically explain every single one of them myself, which is not good on my end.
Neither can I, to be honest with you.
And see that right there? That comment, I think, is a reason for us to review, not say anything bad is happening, but to better understand why it is that we have it there so we can explain it to ourselves and explain it to our constituents.
Well, I think adding it to the narrative, we've got all these boxes that outline the priorities and the goals, and if there are reserves accounts attached to the budget unit for the department, then an explanation on the reserves within the narrative for us.
And that would be a step forward.
And if you look at the fund summary, it does actually have descriptions.
Yeah, let's add a box, different color.
Well, if you look at the fund summary, it's provided, it gives you the breakdown of what the descriptions of they are. But I also understand when certain ones say just restricted, like under Road, restricted, sorry, Rose, that's just random where I'm at, restricted 7.2 million. And you know, restricted isn't a known quantity. I'm all for having that knowledge brought out for the public. I just think it needs to be from the department themselves. And the time that we already have to do that is generally our two-day in June. If the board does want basically every department head who has a reserve to present at mid-year, we can do that, because that's what it would take to explain these. Because I don't know that I would feel comfortable just giving you the paragraph of what a department said their reserve is, and then be able to answer any questions related to it.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that. And I'm okay with that forward step. At least it's a step towards what I think is a better transparency.
When we explain to the department heads for the June presentation, make it very clear to...
To include that information. Include it in the memo, include it in the presentation.
In June.
In June. Consensus? Yes, okay.
I don't know that would be included in the memo, because that's already like eight pages.
Within the summary, I think is what it says.
The summary, yeah. The fund summary. The memo in this budget unit. Yes.
Department overview? Do you mean like the Form 1?
Department overview.
The first page of every department's fund.
It says department overview, accomplishments, goals, and then we talk about reserves.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Casey?
Okay, so now we'll bring up Lars Ewing, Director of Public Services for the Facilities Capital Improvement Plan.
All right, good afternoon. Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. As this is getting dialed up, I'll just give a brief intro. This, well, also the last fiscal year, now I can say that. Your board directed Public Services to come up with a Facilities Capital Improvement Plan. County has never had one, and so we have prepared that. We have a County Capital Improvement Plan policy that guides that. It does direct that during final budget presentations, that the Public Services Director would present that. So the next, here we go, next slide, it's me. All right, so we just went through capital assets. These, just a picture of the various capital assets that you've looked at. What I'm going to be presenting here is not everything on here, far from it. There's a lot on here that I have no involvement with, thankfully. And so what I am going to be presenting focuses on facilities. And what's up on the screen right now is a draft capital improvement plan that will come to the board. We, and I'll say I, elected to wait until after final budget, because there's so many decisions made at this point, reserves, fund balance, carryover, that really plays into a five-year plan. What's tied in today is the annual budget. But the five-year plan is not a budget document, it's a planning document. So a lot of the decisions made here affect that. So I am going to give a snapshot of that five-year plan, but I will be focusing on the facility-specific and some of the park-specific projects this year. I will try to be brief. As I say that, a lot of words. All right, so what I'm going to present here is broken down, not by budget units, which is what we're all familiar with. I'm breaking it down into functional areas. You can see there are six different functional areas. That way, the board can get an understanding of where your building dollars going to. Are they going to community services-type buildings, which are generally used by the publics, like libraries, museums, senior centers, community rooms? General government, the building we're in is probably a good example of that. Health and social services, generally anything in behavioral health, child support, environmental health, public health, and social services. Public safety, essentially anything that is sheriff, probation, DA, animal control. And everything from there up are buildings. From parks down are non-b buildings, so recreation facilities. And public infrastructure is the last item. That's generally public works, special districts, and part of public services as well with the landfill. The built infrastructure, what is in the current budget across all departments for built infrastructure on capital asset? You can see public infrastructure is the majority, about 75, 74%. And the rest is, well, it's the rest. And so we're going to focus on that item here. And so we'll dial down to that. You can see that of the 10.6 million, the majority, well, not the majority, but 38% is general, 32% is Parks, and you dial down from there. So for, just because we're focusing on a Facilities Capital Improvement Plan, I am going to focus on the building portion, but I wanted to pause, because the Parks Reserve and the JPA was referenced. You know, the five-year plan, the five-year plan includes a lot of Parks projects. The needs far exceed any reserve that we have or anything that the JPA may propose. So I greatly appreciate the notion of the, well, not just the notion, but the reserve itself. And the fact that our needs exceed what we have really just demonstrates the fact that those reserves are important, so long as they're used. So moving on into the focus area of facilities, general government is the bulk, 57%, followed by public safety. And again, this is this fiscal year. Community services, 13%, and health and social services, 3%. Again, just kind of dialing it down, that we are going to give a sneak peek. I am going to give a sneak peek of the next five years, just what is planned. You know, this is a joint effort between the department heads who submit their capital project requests going through the budget process, working with admin, working with the board, to identify what projects we need to plan for. That's really what this is, is an outlook. So I will be coming to the board to present this plan. But just to give you a sense of what we currently are looking at by functional area... what we currently are looking at by functional area, what the plan is. You can see that, you know, there's quite a few needs. You know, 11 million this fiscal year, again, just in facilities and parks. This does not include the public infrastructure. So we're looking, you know, we're looking like the needs are clearly there. Now, I'm going to present it briefly differently here. Instead of by functional area, it's by type of project. Are we renovating or are we rehabbing? Essentially, a renovation would be something that generally a department would request. Maybe they want to remodel because it's better for their operations or a new building entirely. That's a renovation project. Rehab is essentially a maintenance project. We're replacing the roof, we're replacing the carpet, that sort of project. So it's important to see where are we spending our money? Where is the board spending its money on projects? So renovation in gray, that's this year, we're looking quite a bit, and the same throughout. And that really points back to the deferred maintenance plan and the facility condition assessments that we had prepared that, you may recall, pointed to about an $8 or $9 million need per year. We looked at that in a lot more detail, and that plan, at a high level, made certain assumptions that, no, we may not need to actually replace a door simply because it's exceeded its life. If it's okay, let's move on. So what are the building systems that we truly need to replace? We focused on basically the building exterior, the roof and the exterior of the building. I mean, case in point, we're replacing the roof right now on this building and we're painting it right now. So, you know, that sort of work. HVAC projects are critical. Those, you know, those are continually needing to be updated. The carpet flooring in buildings and the building exterior, the parking lots, those are the focus building systems that we're looking to rehab. And so when we look at that, the rehab portion, on average, about a $3.5 million per year plan to replace that. Now, again, the needs far exceed what we have, but as we identify the reserves that might be available and putting our money towards getting our facilities in better working order, that really is the focus. So with that, I just, you know, I'm going to end it. Don't want to belabor the point, but wanted to give you a sense of where the building money is going. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Lars. Any questions? Supervisor Green?
You had a spreadsheet a couple of slides ago on showing the breakdown. I saw one of the capital assets that the sheriffs had called out was for a video security system, basically. Can we get that slide up again? And I think it was 150 and 50.
That must have been on your side.
Yeah, so lines two and three together, security camera system, and then backup storage. And I just want to highlight that because, number one, it's like, it almost passed without comment because, of course, the jail would need to have robust security. But as I've mentioned in other meetings prior, there may be other buildings and other properties in the county that may benefit from some enhancements like that. And I get there would be price concerns from any department head and also some debate about the efficacy of a security installation in any particular building. But somewhere between the Safety Committee and the department heads, I just wanted to highlight that as a worst-case scenario, that's a very large, complicated facility with multiple cameras, that is the absolute most that a security camera system is going to cost for any one department that has concerns about that. So for lesser buildings, smaller buildings, that may similarly have safety concerns, I don't want the sticker shot factor to go untested or unobserved. Not saying we all have to rush out and get cameras, but I still feel like we're stuck in the 20th century when we have 21st century security concerns. So I just wanted to highlight that because I thank the Sheriff's Department very much for being proactive and bringing that forward. And I think other department heads might be taking a look at similar capital asset requests in future budget cycles, perhaps as soon as mid-year, if they find, or if they find in concert with the Safety Committee, that they want to take a look at bumping up security at certain sites. And I certainly think there are certain sites with the county that could bear that examination. So thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, Lars.
All right, thank you.
All right, so next up is the requested position allocation changes. So there was just a few this time around. So the tax collector would like a accountant 1/2, and they will be removing a accounting technician position at the next vacancy. Buildings and grounds would like a capital project manager and a facility maintenance supervisor. The supervisor will be paid from the, sorry, the facility maintenance lead worker position will be removed at the next vacancy. Child support services is removing an accountant tech senior to create a accounting technician position. Planning is, as Maria mentioned, removing the grant manager and replacing it with a staff service analyst. Animal control is adding a staff service analyst. And mental health is removing a behavioral health program manager to increase their supervisor, behavioral health clinician specialist by two.
And since you just went over that, might as well add in budget unit 2702, planning, we're adding a principal planner.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then the sheriff would like to come up to share his plan for position allocation change, so Rob Howe.
Good afternoon, Board. I'm Sheriff Rob Howe, and I'd like to thank the Board for this time, of course. This is a little bit out of the ordinary, completely new for me. So what I'll be requesting here is a potential change to the Sheriff's Department's position allocation. And since position allocation is part of final budget, I decided to make this request here. The request would be a position allocation change from our proposed budget. We're looking to eliminate 16 total unfilled positions, 19 deputy sheriffs, and seven deputy sheriff corrections position. We would then be requesting the Board's approval to use the savings gained from those positions, excuse me, to move forward with salary increases to three job classification series. Three series that frankly I see as public safety emergencies right now. I have to say, it's a really difficult decision to single out positions, even in my own department. There are no positions in my department that aren't vital to public safety. There are no positions that don't need improvement to salary and benefits. But I'll be working more traditionally with class and comp to do that. I can really only consider three positions right now, or three series of positions. Emergencies. And those classifications I'd be looking at would be deputy sheriff, deputy sheriff corrections, and public safety dispatcher. Human resources has been good enough to conduct an updated mini-salary survey for those positions, including the same comparable counties, the counties used previously in their complete salary survey. And the increase I'd be seeking would be to get those three series of classifications to the median-based salary of that survey. For deputy sheriff, that would be a 12.59% increase. For deputy sheriff corrections, that would be a 5.89%. And for public safety dispatcher would be 11.04. Again, those increases would simply get us to the median-based salary of the comparable agencies. My first thought was try to get us at least equal to our most immediate neighbors and competitors, being Lakeport PD, CPD, Clear Lake Police Department, and Mendocino County Sheriff's Department. This proposal would get us at least equal with Lakeport PD and Clear Lake Police Department. Mendocino is actually a little higher than the median on all those, and quite frankly, within our own budget, I didn't feel we could afford to make that kind of increase without asking for additional general fund. Mendocino is currently, I believe, 15% above us for deputies, 6% for corrections, and 16% for public safety dispatcher. As far as what's caused the situation, I know I've spoken before the Board, I've spoken to most of you, if not all of you individually. I don't see this as a Lake County problem, it's not a state problem, it's a nationwide problem. There simply aren't enough applicants, people who want to get into law enforcement, to fill vacancies. I don't think salary is the only issue, nor do I think it's going to magically fix everything. But I also think it can't be the final roadblock or can't be the final hurdle when we're trying to compete for the very few men and women who do want to work in a rural county like Lake County. Our current vacancy rate in the positions we're talking about is right about 30% for deputy sheriff, and just below 20% for deputy sheriff corrections, and that's a little bit deceiving just because we have hired some new people out there. We have five in training and numerous officers who are functioning but have not been completely trained in all aspects. We certainly hope to retain them long enough to get them off training to have a true benefit, but I know of at least two that have earned background elsewhere. In fact, since writing these notes, we got a letter of resignation from one of them who will be leaving for another local department. For public safety dispatcher, the vacancy rate is 63.64% right now. Obviously, that's a huge problem in dispatch, but that also compounds the problem in patrol. We have to provide those services. We have three deputies currently working in dispatch. The vacancy rate tells part of the story, but there are just a few things I'd like to talk about that I think really put in context. So patrol. The SO does a lot of things. We have the jail dispatch, investigations, civil boats, things like that, but most of our citizens see and identify with our patrol deputies. Those are the men and women in patrol cars that respond to calls for services, conduct proactive law enforcement in our community. And I can say by far, this area generates the most concern and the most complaints from our citizens. Long response times, lack of high-visibility patrol, and the inability to respond to certain calls because we have to prioritize, and we simply don't have enough deputies on at any given time to respond to all calls for service. To give a little better idea where we are right now, we do patrol shift sign-ups every four months. This time last year, we had 23 deputies signing up for patrol. That's our 24/7 operation. This year, at the same time, we have 13. And that 13 is after pulling deputies on a rotation basis from things like our roadmap task force and marijuana task force, and not having anybody in school resource. Again, this is not a Lake County problem exclusively. There are numerous, not numerous, but there are Northern California counties who've had to eliminate patrol altogether because of short staffing. So that's certainly something I don't plan to do here. Something else I'd like to point out about that situation is it has a tremendous effect on retention. If we're signing up somewhere close to half the number of deputies patrol on patrol, but our calls for service have essentially stayed the same, that means you're doubling the workload of those individuals still working for us, and that is devastating on morale. Again, going back to being able to compete locally, you've probably seen, like LPD's local, their social media, they've recently posted that they're fully staffed, and I think that's great. I support law enforcement in all of Lake County. I think they have 13 sworn positions, and four of those positions are filled with people who were one-time Lake County SO employees. That's 30%, by the way. And don't get me wrong, I have not talked to them individually. I'm not saying that any of them, did I get that wrong or something?
No. I'm just having Kevin back there.
By the way, I already talked to Brad, he knows it's coming too. And this is not a knock on LPD. Again, I'm very happy that every law enforcement, they should be fully staffed. And I was going to continue to say, I haven't spoken to them, I don't know individually if it's because of salary or workload. There was personal decisions made by each of those individuals, obviously. I just use them as an example of the importance and necessity of being able to compete at least locally. So where that leaves me is in closing, what I'm requesting of the Board is to approve a request to move forward with the elimination of the aforementioned positions, allow the Sheriff's Office to use the savings gained to fund increases in three series of classifications mentioned, deputy sheriff, deputy sheriff corrections, public safety dispatcher, and to direct human resources to complete the necessary position allocation resolution and to complete the necessary meet and confer process with the affected bargaining units. And of course, that resolution would come back to the Board in a future date once completed. And other than that, I don't think we have any significant changes in the Sheriff's Department budget. Like, that's not significant enough?
Thank you, Sheriff. I know that you didn't make this decision lightly, and I can only speak for myself, but this Board has always been proactive with providing the positions needed moving forward. So if we really start to fill these positions, I think the rest of the Board would agree to continue to provide them as needed.
I appreciate it, and the Board's been very supportive. And this is something I think is necessary, but the recent improvements made over the past couple of years, I mean, if we didn't have those, we'd be looking at being 30% to 40% below the median in some areas. So we've come a long way. I think it's a unique situation in law enforcement, and we just have to continue. But thank you.
So my next question then is, hopefully this will see some progress with this, but where are we with the signing bonuses, which we have also raised up significantly, but is that another area that we have to look at eventually too? Because I am hearing from you and other staff members that surrounding areas have greatly increased their signing bonuses. And so what, you know, when do we need to look at that factor as well?
Well, I feel like I was asking enough, but no, I'm just kidding. They help and they're beneficial. One of the problems we have is, of course, they help recruitment, but not as much as retention. We have had several employees resign knowing they're going to have to pay it back because if they're leaving for a county like Napa or Sonoma, they're going to get not only a larger signing bonus, but the pay increase would pay that back no problem. So it's a good retention tool, I think, or, excuse me, a good recruitment tool, but I think this is more for retention. And you're right, there are counties 25, 50, $75,000 signing bonuses just between Napa, Sonoma, and the Bay Area. But there are plenty of Northern California counties that don't have them as well. I think we're okay there at the time. There may come a time when that has to increase to stay up with, you know, to be competitive as well, but right now, my main focus is this.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Smatia, did you have your pen up?
Yeah, no, I was going to say I'm in full support of making those changes. One of my questions that I didn't ask you when you and I spoke earlier this week was, how many vacancies does that still leave you after the changes that you're offering to make?
We'd be looking to hire a minimum of five deputies. We also have three in the academy right now, and three in dispatch. So hopefully, to improve those by 11. I brought about five for deputy corrections. Again, we have several in there, but they're awaiting training. So if we can get them off training and retain them, that will certainly benefit us. But a big deal is dispatch, obviously, with a 60-plus percent vacancy rate, getting three deputies out of there and getting that fully staffed, we can hire, I think it's six dispatchers.
Okay. And to me, that part's important because that's kind of a foundation of ensuring that the communication from the public reaches the ears of law enforcement that are patrolling in the streets. Dispatch is really important, and also to keep our law enforcement out on the street rather than in the dispatch room. I know that it's kind of contradictory to what I've been saying, which is, why do we have unfunded positions? I just want to at least have the conversation, what's the difference? Some people get scared that if we get rid of positions, it's going to be that much more of an uphill battle to replace those. I haven't seen that here at this Board level, but again, we don't know if any of us will be here four years down the road. Just want to put the conversation out there, what would be the difference in unfunding those positions rather than getting rid of those positions, and your thoughts on that?
That's more of an issue, I think, with administration and what that means to overall budget. I do know that the thought of eliminating position has been a sticking point for a lot of people, me too, in the past, for a couple of reasons. I think this is a pretty unique situation we're in, and it's pretty simple math for me, I guess I'm a simple guy, but if I have 10 openings that I can't fill, and I have, by eliminating five, it allows me to maybe fill the five, that's five more than I had before, and that's really what we're looking at. And I do, I have complete faith in the Board that if we get to a position where we're fully staffed and our community needs more law enforcement officers, I'll be.
Budgetarily, differences between unfunding and removal, it's just on your position allocation?
And the difficulty of placing it back on the position allocation if it's unfunded or removed?
Any time of the year.
Same, same basic steps?
It's a standard resolution or at budget time. The difference is if it's unfunded, if you, I'll say randomly, but not truly randomly, randomly have extra funding available, you can flip the switch and make it funded, but again, it would require coming back to the board. So either way, it'd be a quick board action to either add or fund a position, depending on how it goes. So it's not a huge difference other than what you show on your FTE's position allocation chart.
All right. Go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Sheriff. Just said, I know it's not an easy decision or discussion we're having, but obviously support this idea as we're moving forward. You know, the fundamental need of being able to pick up the phone, call for the sheriff's department, and have a timely response in the most dangerous time of your lives, that's why you're doing this, or the need is really important. Since I've been on the board going on almost seven years now, this has been a constant conversation in the community, public safety, and support this idea moving forward. So thank you for bringing it.
All right. Thank you so much, Sheriff.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff.
Trying not to take your stuff with my stuff.
Does that change the previous slide for position allocation?
Yeah, I think it does.
So that concludes my presentation for the final recommended budget. So if you have questions?
Are we looking to make those changes today, just because we had a list of all the position allocation changes, just, no, that'll be coming back to us?
The sheriff one? It would come back.
Okay.
Once everything is set up, once meeting for and everything gets close, I don't, I don't.
Oh, that's right. That's right. It needs to go through that process.
It's such a long process that I don't feel right cutting positions or unfunding them now.
Okay.
Okay. I'll open it up for the public. Do we have any comments in the board chambers or in the Zoom room? And I'm not on Zoom any longer. So Wendy, could you let me know if there's any hands up? Not seeing anyone in the chambers, and, oh, we do have someone, and I also did not bring my clock in. Thank you, Wendy.
You're throwing me on the clock? Uh-oh.
He's got two minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Honorable Members of the Board. Kevin Ingram, City Manager with the City of Lakeport, just speaking directly to the Parks Reserve. You know, I'm very happy with the commitment that all three entities, Clear Lake, Lakeport, and the county have made to the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority. I think we all know that the ask is really high, the feasibility studies that we did do for the two facilities.
Recreation Agency.
What did I say?
RRA.
Oh, gosh.
We didn't get that. We didn't get that money, Kevin.
Okay. All right. You can throw $3 million to the RRA, too. That'd be great, too. The Rec Authority, thank you. That, you know, it's a, it's a heavy, a heavy ask. The feasibility studies are extremely high. You know, I think in our meetings, we've noted that, you know, going to the voters and asking for $40 million would be crazy to fund this. You know, I think our goal of trying to get to where we're asking the voters instead for maybe operations seems a little bit more in the ballpark of realistic. So with that, it seems like the natural next step would be to try and get these projects to a spot where we can move forward with design. As you know, if we can get design in place, that certainly makes them much more competitive for other grant availability that's out there that I think could certainly, you know, allow us to continue to chip away at that $40 million ask. Even that, using some very round numbers, you know, $40 million, design usually ends up somewhere in the realm of 15% of total costs. You know, you're looking at $6 million alone just in design for those. And, you know, one of the, one of the items that we've talked about is that there certainly is a need to probably look at including some greater amenities in some of the more unincorporated areas and serving those. So if we get to that level where we're asking to get those projects to design level two, you're maybe looking somewhere in the $8 million position. So, I mean, I think the $3 million is a great there. I'll come with my hat and would encourage your board. I know you have many competing priorities, so I know this is not an easy one, but I think, you know, trying to lift that somewhere in the neighborhood of $5 million, certainly other areas are going to have to, you know, pull their weight. That includes the City of Lakeport as well, but I think that would get us, you know, well in the area there. I think $3 million right now represents roughly about 37% of that total design. And the reality of the situation is, you guys are certainly the heaviest hitter in the room, representing the greatest population base, and your budget is quite larger than mine. So, there it is. There's my pitch. Certainly can answer any questions, but otherwise, I will go return to my seat.
Great. Thank you so much. Supervisor Sabatier?
As a question to you, sir, Mr. Ingram, it would be really nice if the committee can submit a letter of proposal to each jurisdiction showing what each share would be, so we know what we're looking at, we know what's being requested specifically, because right now we're seeing big numbers, but I also don't know what is the formula being used. Is it population-based? Is it geographic-based? Is it proximity-based to where those will be? And so having something more specific and a tailored plan ironed out than the proposal in front of us, then I'd think at that point, I think $3 million is a great place to start. And again, it may not be specifically just to that. It's a little bit nebulous for parks, but then at that point, I'd feel more comfortable saying, yes, this is what we can go ahead and commit to, and things like that.
Yep. Fair statement. I mean, I think, you know, we're just getting up and going, and I think that is absolutely a place to be, and, you know, you know, and it is important to remember, there are more partners than just the three entities. We certainly want to bring those, but at the same time, we are the, the three largest players in that discussion.
Stephen?
So I did have one question, Kevin. On the $5 million or $8 million for the project, is that all in one year, or is it over the course of time, or is that not known yet?
The short answer would be, it's probably not known yet, but I think the quicker we can get them to design, because even though $40 million is an extremely large number, we know the longer we wait, it just gets larger and larger. So, you know, I think it would be, it would be great, you know, as this year's mission, and, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the, of the full LCA, just the City of Lakeport, it would be fantastic to get to a position this year where we were putting those projects out to design and then looking at, you know, future grants and, and, you know, and pitching them to, to other various entities as well, to start chipping away at that, that larger cost.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Not seeing anyone in Zoom? No hands up in Zoom?
Yeah, there's one.
There's one? And you're?
Well, it went off. Oh, now it's back up.
The participant list?
6205.
Okay. Wendy, can you get the timer ready? Okay, go ahead. I think it's Bart.
Thank you very much. This is Bart Levinson. In the past, these budget presentations have been excellent with visible slides. Not so today. We're seeing very little on the screen and nothing but the sheriff, nothing now. This is so complex and important information, we really need to see the slides and be able to request the, the images after the budget presentations. Thank you.
Do we have any other hands up? Is that it? Okay. Then I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, just wanted to mention one thing regarding special districts. Just at least wanted to alert the board that I have spoken with Director Harder, and there is some work being done on the infrastructure of the southeast sewer, not southeast sewer treatment plant, but the infrastructure that brings the sewer to the treatment plant, and there will be things that, just, that there's been discussions to enhance the infrastructure within the City of Clear Lake, and those things I don't believe are on the capital asset list. I don't know if they have to be on that list, but it's things that will be coming in the near future.
Okay.
Not sure exactly what that timeline looks like.
Okay. So I know we had a couple of adjustments that were made during the meeting here. Do we need to adjust anything in the recommended actions to incorporate them?
Yes.
Okay.
Casey, can you restate the AQMD account numbers and changes, and then I will explain the CDD ones?
Yes. To budget unit 8799, increase 1513 by $410, decrease 25 by $410, and decrease 38 by $2,364.
And then moving on to community development planning, in the revenue accounts, 2110, increase it by $83,000. Revenue account 2140, increase by $18,000. Revenue account 6612, increase by $18,000. And then moving down into the appropriations, account 0111, $72,238. 0221, $5,574. Account 0330, $12,042. And then finally, account 0331 for $146. Sorry, going into weeds, but that will also be when you're going for the resolution, that there's numbers that will have to be adjusted before signature, so.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if there's no further discussion, I offer the resolution adopting the final recommended budget for fiscal year 2324 as detailed in the attachments with the included amendments as stated by both staff members in front of me.
Second.
Resolution's been offered?
Sorry.
All right, we're just.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Yes.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes. Michael.
Michael's on.
Now, you gave some numbers. Did we need to go through the specific numbers or just relate back to what was on the screen as far as the position allocation changes?
The one specific change would be adding the principal planner in budget unit 2702.
In addition to what was listed on the matrix. So I offer the resolution establishing new classifications, the effective date thereof, and amending the position allocation chart for fiscal year 2324 with what was proposed, including the amendment for CDD.
Resolution's been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
I know, but I was going to second the rest.
My nan's staff, and Casey.
Thank you very much, board.
Congratulations on your first of many budget presentations to come. It's wonderful to work with both of you. Thank you for being so thorough and efficient, for keeping us on track. Yes.